All roll.
Counselor Corn.
Here.
Counselor Maruho.
Here.
Counselor Chapel.
Here.
Counselor Arnold.
Uh, here.
Counselor Halverson.
Here.
Counselor Moore. Counselor Johnson.
Here.
Counselor Hildebrand.
Present.
Counselor Oropesa.
Here.
Counselor Kevin.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Okay, well, I have, if we can, uh, uh, Counselor Maruho, if he would mind lead us into the prayer, and we'll have, uh, Councilman Juan do the pledge, please?
All right.
All right.
Where's the flag?
Well, we have a make-believe one. It's a virtual flag. They're using it in the other room, so, okay. We still know it, and that flag doesn't have to be here. You want to do the prayer first?
Yes. Father God, we come before you and give you all glory and honor. Thank you for allowing us to be here. Ask you to bless the mayor, the councilors, our city manager, deputy city manager, attorney, and our treasurer. Father God, bless all those that are here. We give you the glory and honor in our decisions tonight, Father God, in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First item we have is approval of the agenda, uh, for the May ninth meeting council meeting. Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I move to approve the agenda for the May nine, twenty twenty-four regular city council meeting with the following changes. Item seven, replace the minutes in the packet with the ones that were handed out from the special city council meeting from April twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four. The wrong minutes were uploaded. Remove item number eight, airport advisory committee update from the agenda because the May meeting was canceled. Remove item ten, fiscal year twenty twenty-three audit report presentation from the agenda, as this will, uh, they will present during item sixteen.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Hildebrand.
Where did you move ten, Counselor?
Item ten, it just gets removed.
It's going to be covered in sixteen.
Okay, very good.
Uh, we have a motion by Councilman Hildebrand, seconded by Council Lady Halverson. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the agenda, the agenda has been set. Number, item two, we're to approval of the consent, uh, agenda, Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda for the May twenty-nine, uh, May nine, twenty twenty-four regular city council meeting, as amended.
Second. Okay, we have a motion for approve the consent agenda by Councilman Hildebrand, seconded by Councilor Kevin. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Likewise, by unanimous vote, it passes. Okay. Okay, three to seven, so we now we're on item eight. I believe is that?
No, item eight struck.
Oh, item eight was struck, so we're on item nine. Mr. Spiritu, would you care to address?
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors. First, uh, I want to, I would like to say a couple of things before I get to my presentation, Mr. Mayor, councilors, and that is, uh, we always, our organization support your, your, your support all year long. We cannot be or who, or, and do what we do without you. We're in this together. We're partners together to make good things happen for the good of Roswell and the people that live here. As you probably know, this week, among other weeks throughout the year, is a special week, and I want you to pay attention particularly to the fact that this week is not only Economic Development Week, which is fitting for my annual report, but it's also, um, it's also a recognition for our public servants. And it's important to, to always remember that folks at all levels, what, all those of government that give of their time and their talent and do the routine to service the citizens of our communities is important. And we'll forever be grateful for the men and women that do those type of things. So thank you for allowing me to say that. Well, as you know, I'm going to see if I can get this right. Okay, as you know, these are our, our main priorities, our top priorities, and that's to attract and recruit companies, create jobs, to help those that are already in business that have made that, that, uh, investment in our community, have created jobs, and, uh, put bill of work, pay payroll, and create capital investment and taxes to help our city grow. Without a workforce, we can't attract a company, and we certainly can't help the communities, uh, our communities with a, with the problems and issues they have today with staffing. On the community, excuse me, on the community development side, it's also equally important to have a great quality of place. And you've heard me say that before, often people say quality of life, I say quality of place, because as we recruit businesses and families to come to Roswell, we have to have a place they want to come to. And have a strong vision with you on a better and stronger Roswell, so we can be a strong, resilient community and really improve the economic landscape for many, many years. In our business attraction and recruitment, um, we have primary targets. These are those. First off, our priorities is aviation, aerospace, defense. You know, Roswell was founded on agriculture, and you know, those of you who've been here for all your lives and even for short, shorter terms, that there's agriculture throughout Chavas County. Manufacturing is also equally important because they bring high-wage jobs. Energy, we're on the cusp of the Permian Basin. I like to say we're on the gateway of the Permian. We have a lot of energy companies right here in our community, and we have others that seek, that may seek to come here as well. And of course, tourism, and I'll talk more about that in just a minute. In our event, in our, in our work to attract and recruit companies, we tend a lot of trade and sales missions, uh, go to expos, conferences, and site selection events, and get in front of decision makers and the consultants who make recommendations to companies that are looking for new homes. This year, uh, we've attended several site selection events, uh, and many missions, worked closely with New Mexico Partnership, um, worked on lead generation, not only with, within the state, but with outside the state and also within our own community, and that means our entrepreneurs. We advertise in many trade publications, uh, promoting primarily our air center, because that truly is a gem of Roswell and this region. Our website is a very strong, uh, website. It's, I can't tell you how many comments, good comments I have about our website. It is designed only for economic development agencies across the country. Uh, we partnered with them two years ago. We'll do two more years, and then we'll do a refresh and have a clean website promoting our city. And of course, as you know, we advocate legislatively for, uh, for those type of, uh, opportunities that affect business at our state and federal level, and often, as you see, we're involved also in the local level at the city and the county. Okay, so, uh, how did we do this, uh, this past years? Uh, these are the events that I attended, uh, Air Service Conference, Site Link Forum, which is one of a kind, first ever happened in Roswell. We brought, we brought site selectors in here, other EDOs from across the state, and showcased Roswell to, to them. Um, and recently, uh, you haven't seen yet, because we haven't publicized it yet, I just received a copy of a Trade Industry Magazine where Roswell's featured in it because of our work with one of those consultants. And, uh, many site selection events, uh, PB Expo is an aviation event, uh, so is, um, MRO Americas, which I just returned from in, uh, in a few weeks ago, and in June I'll be going to Select USA. Last year, we had three really strong leads from international companies that are seeking to reshore or bring business into the United States. We had three really good leads that they didn't really, haven't really taken off yet, but we did work through that. We have seventy-six active projects in our pipeline still, and we submit on fourteen this current year, and we will continue to work on those and continue to submit on those that we received from the New Mexico Partnership. As a reminder, the New Mexico Partnership is the marketing arm for the state of New Mexico. They're under contract with the Economic Development Department, they have a budget, and they're funded by our state legislature to help bring in new opportunities to the state. In recent years, not here, but I was on their board of directors, in fact, I was their treasurer, uh, it's an important activity that brings in new investment. And as you know, we've been very busy with Reno Air Racing Association and, and Incar. And, uh, I, I, you've heard me talk about it a lot, I, there's not much more I can say, except where I think we're on a good path forward, and I think we'll hopefully get some good news in the soon, in the near future. You know about, uh, the affordable housing, uh, company, Builtwise or Turnkey Ventures, um, bus plant, purchasing the land that you all voted to do, or just waiting on the FA approval to, for the land release, but they've already hired, I understand, over twenty people, and they've already got shipments of product, and they're already starting to work. And I also understand from the company that they already have sold over a hundred boxes for homes, not just necessarily in Roswell, but outside the state of New Mexico. You know, we see this, this project not only taking a shuttered building that's been vacant for, what, eighteen or twenty years, whatever it is, and finally getting some life back in it, create some good jobs, some good paying jobs, in fact, many of the jobs are considered high-wage, and, uh, provide a product that not only, not only helps our housing problems, but housing problems throughout this part of the region. The company, uh, Builtwise, is headquartered in South Carolina, and this is their western expansion, and we see a lot of activity that we think was going to happen as a result of them being right here in our home. On our business retention expansion side, I'm going to say BRE, because that's, that's what it is, and that's where we go out and visit businesses, um, and the whole purpose, the whole purpose on BRE visits is to go check on those businesses and help them stay in business if they're challenged, uh, help them find resources so they can get better and maybe grow more jobs, maybe expand and have more infrastructure, um, and also to, uh, help them with, uh, financing and all these things so they can be successful. We, as you know, we have, uh, a facade grant, we've had it for several years, and we have one in the process now, and hopefully we'll see it come fruition very soon. So how did we do this year? Well, we've had, our goal was to visit forty businesses monthly. We didn't quite hit that target. It's a pretty lofty target. I, uh, compared that number with other economic development agencies across New Mexico, and I was quite alarmed when I asked one, one, one city, and I said, I said, "How many BRE visits do you do every month?" They said, "Two." I said, "That's it? Two? Well, we're trying to do two a day." So, and frankly, it's, it's a lofty goal. It was, and it's, the, the forty was Mike's number, frankly, and I know that we need to change that, and I think we've, we've talked about that in the legal and finance committee meetings. But we do surveys with them. We've gone and visited them in their, in their places of business. We talked to them about how to grow and how to be successful, um, and I think that's really important, because what we've seen as a result is great support for J-Tip and Lita, and you've seen that right here on the council. Um, and I want to talk about, uh, J-Tip on the very next slide. Um, so this past year, uh, to date, over three hundred businesses that we've contacted, and, uh, we have complete tracking. It's not just go out and see someone and say, "How you doing?", but we actually have a complete survey, a documentation, uh, and, uh, I review it. We look at trends for issues that may be affecting or impacting those businesses, and then we go to work on finding solutions for them and with them. But J-Tip, um, one hundred ninety-three jobs were created as a result of J-Tip this past year. And you see that two-point-five-billion-dollar award, that's for those businesses this past year, uh, through J-Tip. We are the leading, leading rural community in J-Tip awards in the state of New Mexico, and we're number three in the state of all size cities with J-Tip awards. We not only support them in their application, I testify with the company before the commission to get their award, and I'll tell you that, uh, it's always gratifying to see companies able to train their employees and get reimbursed for doing that, and that's what that program is all about. On the workforce development side, you know, we do job events, and we go attend many of them, and we help those out, but we've had many ourselves, um, but it's all about growing a local workforce through partnerships with our university and our public schools. Their career tech education programs, um, we need, we're going to start really lifting that up. We've got a little slow on that this year, frankly, because we are so involved with Reno Air Racing that it kind of took the front seat to a lot of our programs, but we are rapidly getting that back on the, on the fast track and working with our public schools even stronger, so we can get students in a pipeline to work in those career fields that, uh, we need employees for. We are heavily involved in creating apprenticeship opportunities with local businesses throughout Chavas County and Roswell, and in fact, I talked with, uh, with Ferguson Plumbing, Raxton, just today, about how we can stimulate some apprenticeship programs so they can get some, not only, um, apprenticeships with students, but also, um, using the, um, Workforce Investment, Opportunity Investment Act funding, use young people as interns through that program, which is actually free money. So, I'm happy to share that with you sometime, but, uh, we have one in our office, we have an intern, we don't pay, we don't pay the salary, that's paid through that program, and that program exists to help other like companies. Uh, so I think we've lined up a young man that wants to be a plumber with Ferguson and move forward to get some training, and possibly if it works out, and six hundred paid hours of training at no cost to the company, and, and a, a young person, if the shoes fit, then they may stay with the company for a long term. We've had business and leadership seminars, I think you know that during these BRE visits I just talked about, one of the areas that we had such a large influence from our local business people was about workforce, right? We all know that. It's been like that since COVID. And they said, "Well, how can you help us with our workforce and our issues?" I can't tell you how many resumes are sent to me, uh, weekly by people I don't know, saying, "I'm looking for a job, I'm looking for a job." And we refer them, we have a job site, uh, on our, on our website, but more importantly, uh, we have companies here that kind of figured that code out on how they can retain people. So we did a, a, an event, a seminar, and we brought in some key leaders that have figured it out right here in Roswell, and met with a lot of our community businesses. It was a, a large event, and, and people well-attended and well-appreciated by those in attendance. So, uh, this past year, uh, we did continue to be involved with all the public schools in the county, including the institute. Uh, we were just at the institute a few months ago in their, uh, in their career day, and we have attended quite a few of those. Um, we've linked industry partners with the educational community. You know, young people don't know what it may take to be a contractor, build homes, and why it's, it's important to take geometry. So, when we put them together with those industry partners, and they learn that these things are necessary, all of a sudden, schoolwork, it becomes more relevant, like geometry, if you want to build a house. And you know what that leads to? Higher graduation rates and a better workforce. So if you look at it, it really helps blossom our community in many ways. Um, we, um, participate in a lot of job fairs and hiring events, like I mentioned, um, we supported, uh, those career events at the high schools and the institute, as I mentioned also, and we held those business seminars. Okay, some other things that happened this past year. Uh, so, you know, we did a lot of work with, with the Reno Air Race, and, and many of you were part of that, and thank you. Couldn't have done it without you. Um, and we are finalists of the three cities. Um, we hope by the end of this month, they'll have a, they'll have an announcement, selections, and we can bring them, bring them home to Roswell. Um, you know, we had that big balloon out here, and I know that Counselor Halverson was out there, took a lot of great pictures, and, and you wonder why that's on my slide? Because they contacted us. They needed help to navigate the city and the county and emergency services, and, and we didn't do the work, we just helped connect the dots, and we're pretty good at that. And, uh, uh, they are very grateful, in fact, the, the billionaire that's funded that entire jump wrote a letter of support to RARRA for us, and we forwarded on to the chairman of the RARRA's board. We held a legislative recap for our state lawmakers after the session. Standing room only. If you weren't there, it was a good session, um, I think the legislators, they appreciate that. Uh, I don't know the last time we did one here in Roswell, uh, but going forward, I think we're also doing something else, and that is, and, and Commissioner, Counselor Kevin, excuse me if I call you Commissioner, but Counselor Kevin and I also visited about this, that we need to reinstitute those, those visits to the Hill and talk about those issues impacting Roswell like we used to some years ago, and we're going to look into that and work on that, uh, this next year. The U.S. Navy comes here every spring, and like every spring, we hold a welcome reception for all the aviators, and you probably don't know that, but it costs your EDC about four to five thousand dollars, because those Navy, young Navy people eat and drink a lot, just saying. And, uh, and that's fine, because they are so appreciative of the welcome, and they keep coming back, and their leadership appreciates it, and they keep coming back. This last time, I spoke with their leadership, and I said, "You know, it'd be great if you could train here more than once a year." And he goes, "You know, this group that comes every spring is from Corpus Christi." He said, "There's a group in, uh, another community that is looking for a new home, and we're going to tell them they need to come to Roswell." Again, the economic impact, hotels, our restaurants, rental cars, fuel, I mean, food, everything impacted right here in our community. One, um, I don't know if I, if you recall, or I may have mentioned to you, but last year, we got a, we got a visit by a company because he was in the Navy, and they had, he had come here and went to one of our receptions, and he came here just because of that, because of his experience, uh, here in Roswell. Well, we have a very strong, uh, membership, uh, group in the EDC. We have about over a hundred and seventy members, and not just a hundred and seventy members, but this year, under Kirk Gass's leadership, uh, we've really, we've elevated a lot of those, uh, members paying, to pay a little bit higher membership fee, but a partnership, um, to help support our work. As you know, we don't charge for our services for anyone. We do everything for free, because it's important to give back through the funds that you give us and the county and our members to do the work we do to support people in business. This last year, we are recertified as a state economic development organization. Not all cities in the state are, but we are one of the first, uh, the year before last. We were recertified last year, and I intend, I expect we'll be recertified again this fall. Um, I mentioned about the Site Link Forum, and, um, recently, uh, Chavas County commissioners made a proclamation and selected, and announced that a day, uh, a day back in March was Roswell-Chavas Economic Development Day in Chavas County. Quite an honor. I don't know that we've ever had that honor, but it was nice to see that, and we appreciated that. The next year, the path forward, what does it look like? Well, obviously, the Roswell Air Races. Um, so, working on the plan of action for that and trying to work towards helping them be successful. But we'll also be doing a lot of things, same things we've been doing before. Will we still be attending some, some site selection and consulting events to still continue to draw in and create more jobs, to create more capital investment, to create more GRT, and crew, improve a better quality of place for the people that hope to be here and those that are already here. We'll submit on proposals, as I said before, and we'll continue to support Turnkey Ventures, Builtwise, and, uh, the Reno Air Races in, in incentives. In our BRE attraction, business retention, recruitment, recruitment attraction, excuse me, um, we will work on identifying two projects annually, that's our goal. We just had a site visit this week with another company, and it was quite startling. Mr. Mayor was attended many of those sessions, um, significant. It's a, it's an MRO, it's a new MRO company that, uh, really given strong consideration to landing right here in Roswell. Uh, we'll conduct, uh, also those site visits, we'll have two projects, and we'll, uh, assist in creating higher-wage jobs and more capital investment. On the BRE side, uh, we'll visit twenty county-wide businesses monthly, support, uh, expansion, identify those trends, as I mentioned earlier, and, uh, support and assist folks for more J-Tip funds through those different programs of the state board. On the workforce, on the workforce development side, we'll continue to work on career tech education to an even higher level this year, work with our educational institutions, um, meet, uh, with Job Corps, in fact, I had a nice meeting with, uh, the Job Corps Director today, and we talked about some, some work ahead, how they can fit into us, uh, into what we're trying to achieve in finding the human pipeline of talent, uh, right here at our Job Corps, right here in our community. Apprenticeship programs, and, um, in case you didn't know, I sit on that Eastern Air Warfare Development Board, I'm on the youth committee, because I believe that youth is the future, right, like we all do, but also the future of our workforce, and we need to work towards how we can create those opportunities for those young people. Um, lastly is our, our community development. We'll continue to help our, our healthcare professionals recruit new talent, because that's really important, as we all know, not only in one hospital, both hospitals, but all activities. You may recall, and I know that Mayor does, but you may recall the issue with medical malpractice, and it's been going on for several years, and we were pretty active in trying to fight that change for the better, not for the worse. Um, and that's important, because doctors were leaving New Mexico, not just Roswell, but New Mexico as a result. So we put together a, a team, and we actually campaigned to help reduce that malpractice insurance fees, uh, some of that did come down, not to levels we want to, but it's better than it was. Hopefully, the hospitals and the other agencies will recruit the healthcare folks they need. Still involved with hospitality and tourism, another company that was just here, interested in a, a possible hotel, a couple of restaurants, and, uh, we'll continue our talks with them, but that was just, that was just Monday and Tuesday of this week, so, um, pretty exciting if they can do this one restaurant that I think everybody's going to really like. Can't talk about it now, but it's, it's too premature. I'll tell you when I can. Um, we'll continue to help entrepreneur projects. We have one entrepreneur that I've been working with for four years, and he's right here in Roswell. He's getting close, and he's invested probably close to a million dollars of his own money to get to where he's at, and, uh, once we get to the point where we can talk about that, it's called Project Steel, um, and, uh, when you, when you get to see that, I think you'll be kind of surprised, kind of elated. So anyway, it's kind of a good deal. So we'll continue to work with the entrepreneurs in the local area, because people have, a lot of people have a lot of good ideas, we want to help them to fruition, and there's a lot of programs and incentives that we can help push together, possibly, if they fit those criteria, and they can be on, on the road to success, and more importantly, create more jobs. I talked about quality of place, tourism, you know, we're involved with our Main Street, uh, that's important. Um, we believe in, in that advocacy, because it creates a better Roswell, and of course, legislative advocacy, and how we can support and continue to support those companies I talked about, by advocating for the incentives from the state, that they continue to renew those, but also any type of legislation that is impactful to our local business people. Well, with that, uh, Mr. Mayor, councilors, uh, that concludes my annual report. We, um, we appreciate, um, again, your steadfast commitment to economic development and, uh, our agency. Um, I think we're pretty good at what we do. Uh, we have a great board of directors of seasoned, of senior, uh, and seasoned business professionals, people that care with you and others to make Roswell a better place. I stand for your questions, Mr. Mayor, councilors.
Do we have any questions of, uh, Mr. Spiritu? Counselor Corn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any questions. I'd like to make a few comments. That gentleman standing right there is the one, oh, you, you know who I'm talking about, or if you don't know, you'll figure it out real quick, is the one that raised the flag on RARRA, standing right there. He found it, he got us excited. Not only is he on RARo, standing right there. He found it. He got us excited. Not only has he gotten us excited, but southeastern Mexico's excited. Heck, Mr. Mayor, the state of the Mexico's excited about this thing. We got $3 million if we land this fish. That was a bet that we're going to win it, and the legislature gave us the money. And I want to thank you and your board and your president sitting there for funding this effort. Really appreciate it. I was fortunate enough to be, to learn a lot about this process, and it's an ongoing thing, and hopefully, they'll make this deadline in May. All the rest of the deadlines have slid a little bit, and that's okay. They've got a big job. And just the fact that we're third out of how many applied, Mike?
I understand 38, sir.
I think that says-
We're not third.
Well, we were the first to get our paperwork in. We've always been first. And when we were out at the Air Races, we were the first city there. We were the first every morning, and we were the last to leave every night. I mean, we were there, we had our sleeves rolled up, and we worked hard the whole time we were there. And again, I want to publicly thank you and the EDC Board for your support on this endeavor. Hopefully, we'll know here in a few more weeks.
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Corn, thank you for that. But it wasn't just me. Yeah, I heard about it. I'm the one that stuck Roswell's neck out. But it was a lot of people, a lot of you, many of you, most of you, my board, who voluntarily said at a board meeting, whatever it takes, whatever it costs. We spent nearly $100,000 to date to attract RARo and us be the final home. But it's about a team. And I appreciate so much the people that were involved to make it happen, because this is a life-changing event for New Mexico, let alone Roswell. Life-changing, and we appreciate, thank you for your comments, counselor. But it's more than Mike. It's so many people, so many of you. Thank you so much for all you've done.
You were the first one. You were the guy that brought it to our attention, and I appreciate that. You kicked it off, and you can't deny that, can you?
No, sir.
Quit being so humble. We appreciate you. We appreciate your support. And yes, it took a big team, a lot more than sitting up on this desk or sitting out in the audience. There have been a number of people that have been involved at various aspects and phases of this project. And I'm humbled just to have been included as part of the process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you don't get to walk away, Mike. You don't get to walk away. Mr. Mayor? Yes, Councilman. So, Mike, are you, you're in your fifth or sixth year here in Roswell, serving Roswell and Chavas County Economic-
I'm at, coming up on year, well, I'm actually about four and a half years.
Close to five.
Yes, sir.
Now, all I can say is, when you came on board, you hit the ground running. And all the things that Counselor slash Commissioner slash Representative slash Judge Corn said is spot on. And you have been amazing for this community, and we are so grateful for all the things and opportunities that you have helped to bring us. I hear you. You are just like everybody else in this community. You don't want to take full credit for it. But a lot of these things wouldn't have happened without your leadership and the people that you have surrounding you. And it is just absolutely amazing, all the great things that we have coming to Roswell, Chavas County, and the state of New Mexico. And so much it has to do with the work that you have done and what you have brought to this community. So, that applause, I would stand and applaud you. You have done amazing things for this community, and thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, Counselor. Mr. Mayor, it's truly an honor and pleasure, sir, of this community. It really is. It's so refreshing to be in a place where people are more genuine than I've ever seen. People, and I tell this to consultants and businesses all the time. Our community is a family of people that believe in their family, believe in their God, believe in their church, and believe in each other. And right now, we have the perfect storm, in my opinion, because everyone's working together for the good of Roswell and this region. It doesn't happen everywhere. It doesn't happen everywhere. And I'm thrilled to be part, one, a small part of the team of people like you that's making a difference for the many out there that choose to live here in this community. So, thank you for those comments.
Thank you. Any further comments? Well, you know, Mike, you know, and for people who don't know, but when somebody comes here and gets here on that 11:30 or 12:30 flight at night, Mike's there to meet them. And you know, I have to tell you, there's a lot of dedication in that. And the individuals, we had come to Roswell this last week, this last Monday and Tuesday, and Wednesday, we had RARo here. We had six other people here that are looking at making very significant investments in Roswell. And, you know, hangars, hotels, and restaurants. And, you know, it's the kind of, some of the restaurants are the kind of the ones that they don't normally put in smaller cities. But the commitment was there, and it's really nice, because he, Mike goes to these shows, and he speaks us up, and he gets people to come here. So, it's been very good, and thank you for your dedication. And, you know, I think you probably weren't always appreciated as much as you're appreciated now by this council. But this council has a different attitude about economic development, because it's all, almost all of us want jobs for our kids, good jobs. And I commend the council for the work that we've done on RARo and on the other things, for their dedication to improving our community and for jobs, so our kids can stay home, you know. So, that's, just appreciate it, and appreciate your board. Tell them thank you very much for all the work we do and all the people who come on behalf, do work on behalf of Roswell. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along, we're going to, next item is our public participation on agenda items. First item on that will be, if the clerk, do you have our, for our firefighters, or, we had a-
Daniel.
You know, we had a huge fire in Roswell this last week, and it was huge. And magnesium, all kinds of things were burning. And, you know, we had the support of all, you know, volunteer fire departments from all around Chavas County and the whole area. And so, maybe Officer Fuller, would you care to, you're a lot closer to being there as I was in-
Yes.
-out of state.
So, Mayor, members of the council, it's an honor to be here tonight. As every one of you are aware, we had quite the fire on April 25th. We burnt. It's probably one of the biggest fires we've had in at least the last three decades in the county. With that, the members of the Roswell Fire Department performed with great excellence. Not disappointed at all in what they did. It's what we have a passion for. It's what we signed on to do, and the level that the Roswell Fire Department achieved was very high. However, we could not have done it, you guys come on up here, the members that are here. We could not have done this without help from our mutual aid partners, and so often are the unsung heroes, the individuals who don't get enough recognition, our volunteer fire departments within the region. So, tonight here, we have Dexter Fire Department, we have Midway Fire Department, East Grand Plains Fire Department. Along with those responded was Brenda Fire Department, Sierra Fire Department, Hagerman Fire Department, and District 8 Fire Department. We have told us seven volunteer agencies show up to give their assistance. And what's special about these group of people is they do not get paid. They sign up out of, really just out of their heart to give back to their community. I know, beyond a shadow of a doubt, I've known these people here for well over 20 years, and I know their heart is in it. They want to serve, and they love to serve, and that goes along with the other ones. So, with that being said, we have, with the help of the mayor, we wrote a letter of thanks, not only to the county, but to the volunteer fire departments. And I'm going to read that here, just to express our gratitude. So, on behalf of the city of Roswell, we extend our deepest gratitude for your invaluable assistance on April 25, 2024. Your unwavering dedication and selfless service during the recent incident exemplify the true spirit of community and collaboration. Your prompt response and tireless efforts were instrumental in safeguarding our community during the recent incident. The helpfulness and hard work displayed by each member of your teams were truly commendable, and we are deeply appreciative of your dedication to ensuring the safety and well-being of our residents. In times of crisis, it is the collective strength and unity of organizations like yours that make all the difference. Your willingness to sacrifice your time and energy to aid others in need is a testament to your extraordinary character and sense of duty. Your selflessness and bravery do not go unnoticed, and your actions have left a lasting impact on our community. We, as we move forward, let us continue to stand together in solidarity, ready to support one another whenever and wherever the need arises. Your partnership and support are invaluable to us, and we are truly honored to have you as part of our extended community. Thank you once again. So, with that being said, Mr. Mayor, if I may step out of line here and say, Chief Jennings, if you would come down as well, we'd love to get a picture with you as well, so.
Daniel, can you come in front of the podium?
Yeah, we'll get in front of the podium. If you guys come on this side, we'll all get a picture.
Moving. I'll just do it right over her head.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we'll also, we're going to work on getting these letters issued to the remaining departments that could not be here tonight. So, thank you for your support, and again, to the Chavas County, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Of course, everybody knows about the Fullers Volunteers in Midway. You know, one thing should be remembered, Chief Louis Jones, Louis Jones came and he gave his life for this city, and he got all the volunteer fire departments and the regular firemen together to train, share training with each other, and it really enhanced the volunteers and raised their ability, and really got all of us working together. And it's been a long time since Louis has been taken from us, but he was a hell of a chief. And I think there are a lot of people that strive to be like Louis Jones and improve everyone, so everyone that goes to a fire comes back safely. And you can't forget Louis. So, keep him in your thoughts and prayers, as he was taken from us in the line of duty in a horrible way, but he was certainly a wonderful human being. So, okay, thank you all very much. And when you, on public participation, we didn't have anyone sign up for participation in any of the items. If there's anyone that would like to say anything now or speak up, if you'd please raise your hand and come forward and say something. If we don't have anyone, then we will proceed. If you want to speak on a specific item, although you didn't sign up, we'll give you two or three minutes if you'd like. Is there anyone that would care to speak up or say anything at this time? Okay, next, we have item 11, and these are two public hearings. Items 11 and 12 are public hearings, which the individuals who speak would have to be sworn in by our clerk. So, do we have anyone who would like to speak on items 11 and 12? If you do, you have to be sworn in to testify in these hearings. Is there anyone that would like to speak on items 12, 11, or 12? One is a club liquor license for the Pecos Valley Hot Rods LLC, Rocky's Place, 2800 West Second. The other is for a public hearing for a beer and wine license to A&amp;J Hibachi LLC, located at 1,000 West Second, which formerly Rulon, for those who might remember that in the earlier days in your life. Is there anyone that cares to speak, would like to be sworn in for that? If not, we will go on down to the, proceed to the hearings. Okay, seeing none. Okay, okay, Councilman Hildebrand is to item 11 for a motion on, for a public, hold public hearing and a vote for a club liquor license on the premises of 2800 West Second for Pecos Valley Hot Rods LLC, doing business as Rocky's Place. Councilman Hildebrand, would you make a motion, please?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I move that we hold a public hearing to vote on the club liquor license with on-premises consumption only for Pecos Valley Hot Rods, 2800 West Second Street.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Maruho. Okay, okay. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Mayor, counselor, you know, we're here for the public hearing on item number 11 for the, what is, a club liquor license for Pecos Valley Hot Rods, doing business as Rocky's Place. We've all been through this before. It's a quasi judicial hearing. You are to consider the evidence. Don't let your personal opinions about things other than what is presented before you get involved. And you have in your packet, of course, the application, the letter of preliminary approval, as well as the zoning letter from staff here at Roswell. And so, it's really up to you to make a vote. Any vote that you have is, of course, subject to appeal, and which would be handled at the district court level.
Okay, are there any questions? This is a club liquor license, which is similar to what other organizations have. You have to be a member to go in there and consume, or you have to register. If you're a guest of a member, you have to register. And so, this would be a club license that would allow for a complete open sale of alcohol on these premises. Any comments? Seeing none, would take a majority of six members of the governing body to approve this. And if the, seeing no further questions, if the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Corn?
Yes.
Counselor Maruho?
Yes.
Counselor Chapel?
Yes.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Halverson?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
No.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
Counselor Heldenbrand?
Aye.
Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Cavan?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to one.
Okay, by a vote of nine affirmative, one in the negative, item 11 is duly passed the committee. Next, we'll go to item 12, which, this is a public hearing for a vote on a restaurant and beer license, for restaurant and beer and wine license on the premises at 1,000 West Second Street, formerly Rulon's, for A&amp;J Hibachi LLC to have a beer and wine license. Proceed, please.
Mayor, councilor, this is-
Excuse me. Oh, I'm sorry. One second. Councilman Hildebrand, would you please make a motion?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I move that we hold a public hearing and vote on a restaurant, beer and wine liquor license with on-premises consumption and A&amp;J Hibachi LLC, located at 1,000 West Second Street.
We have a motion by Councilman Hildebrand, second by Council Chapel. We have a motion by Councilman Hildebrand, seconded by Council Chapel. Sorry, Chappie. All right. So, okay, would you proceed now, I'm sorry?
Mayor, Councilor, this is functionally identical to the preceding item, so it is, all the same rules apply.
Okay, okay, we have, all the same rules apply. This is only for a beer and wine license, though, period. So this is just kind of a restaurant beer and wine license that we're talking about here. Okay, are there any questions for members of the committee or the council? Seeing none, if the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Corn?
Yes.
Counselor Maruho?
Yes.
Counselor Chapel?
Yes.
Counselor Arnold? Counselor Halverson?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
No.
Counselor Johnson? Counselor Heldenbrand? Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Cabin?
Yes.
Motion pass-
Of nine affirmative, none in the negative, item thirteen, item twelve is duly passed for a beer and wine license at A&amp;J Hibachi. Okay. Okay, next, we have item thirteen, under new business, approval of transfer of two used Roswell Police Department marked patrol, police units to the New Mexico Mounted Patrol. Councilman Hildebrand?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we approve the transfer of two used Roswell Police Department marked police vehicles to the New Mexico Mounted Patrol.
Second.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Hildebrand for the approval of transfer of two used Roswell Police Department to the Mounted Patrol, seconded by Counselor Moore. Okay. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council. Today, I would like to see if we can approve the donation of two marked police vehicles used to the New Mexico Mounted Patrol. The New Mexico Mounted Patrol has helped us tremendously, just like the fire, the fire department just said, by volunteering. They volunteer weekly on major scenes, on a drop of a hat, a phone call away, they're a force multiplier when it comes to big scenes, cattle control, things like that. The, two vehicles, the first one is a two thousand fifteen Chevy Tahoe, it's got a hundred and seventeen thou, a hundred and seventeen thousand miles, was purchased back in two thousand fifteen, and the vehicle's fully depreciated. The other one is a two thousand fourteen Chevy Tahoe, it's got a hundred and sixty-two thousand miles. It was purchased from New Mexico State Police Used back in two thousand twenty-one, and the vehicle currently has a four thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents of depreciation.
Okay, do we have questions for members of the council? Okay, seeing none? Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't, well, I, nobody, I didn't see you raising your hand, I looked, this was off last time I looked at it. Counselor McCorn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Assistant or Deputy Chief?
Deputy Chief, sir.
Deputy Chief, you spend most of your time, your lifetime, and the gentleman standing to your right, my left, getting people to follow the rules, correct?
Yes, sir.
Trying, anyway.
Yes, sir.
If they violate it, sometimes you wave your finger at them, sometimes you cite them, sometimes you arrest them, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, we still, the second unit here, the two thousand fourteen, for whatever reason, I'm checking my, my research, still got a depreciation, we're carrying it on the books, for forty-five, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Thirty-four. Thirty-four, sixty-six, seventy-one is what's left. So, Mr. Mayor, if we move this item, we're gonna, I mean, it's a book loss, I get it, but it's still got to be accounted for. Now, we already covered the fact that you spent your professional career and a good bit of years volunteers, and I love the Mounted Patrol, by the way, I know lots of those folks that are on there, they do an outstanding job, this is not against them, this is following the rules and procedure, okay? So I have in my hand the City of Roswell policy on surplus property, Mayor, these are our rules. We got the power to change the, we've got the power to change these rules, we don't like them, but these are the rules tonight. So it says, transfer to other, other departments, I don't know if, has any other department had an opportunity to see if they could utilize these vehicles?
No, sir, after we purchased the last sixteen vehicles that we, that we got last year or early this year, those became spare units.
Okay, so, but the process spelled out in our own procedures, you don't know if it's been done or not, this isn't your deal, it's the chief's deal, and he's not here, or whoever it was is bird dogging this thing, I don't know, right?
Right.
This is our policies and procedures. That was number four, under methods of disposal, Mr. Mayor, and if you go further in it, you go down to subpart E, and it says, transfer for other, to other public agency, and this is what it says, because I know nobody in here probably read it except me, and that's okay. I found that a lot when I was playing judge, a lot of peo, I was the only one that read the dag gum law, and a couple of people in the courtroom, sometimes the attorneys had trouble understanding it, but anyway. It says, under number one, no policy shall be transferred to another public agency before it is offered to city departments as outlined in section eight. Public agency means the state of New Mexico or any agency or subdivision thereof, any city, county, special district, or school district. Transfers of property to other public agencies will be coordinated by the finance director and shall be approved by a resolution of the city council. The transfer also requires the approval of the local government division of the Mexico Department of Finance. And then it talks about federal government and other government agencies, and there's six subparts to this thing. Now, I got a call, Mr. Mayor, from the chief, who was here earlier, he's already vacated, because somehow they didn't get the stuff in due to my rule about getting stuff to the finance committee, so we can have sufficient time to get all the documents together and get it into the committee members' hands in advance of the meeting, because we got a lot of heady issues in that committee, and I want everybody to have an opportunity to do their homework. Now, if they don't want to do it, that's not my problem, but I want to give them the opportunity to do their homework before we get into that committee, and the rules haven't been followed.
With all due respect, sir, I did submit it to the finance committee, but it was for the, I did, I did request to go to the finance committee.
But you were late.
No, I did it for the June, and I, I did it for the June meeting, because I did miss the May one, I was actually out of town, but yes, I did submit it to, to the June meeting, but I was told to put it on.
What I told the chief, I'd put it on the next finance meeting, not the one we just had.
Ri, yes, sir, so I did put it for the June one.
We didn't follow the rules, okay? If you don't like the rules, state law, court rules, ordinances, regulations, and stuff, then change the cotton pick and rules to where you like them. The rules weren't followed on this deal.
But I did submit it to the June finance committee.
What's it here on this agenda tonight?
I was told to put it on the, on the agenda, sir.
Counselor McCorn, that might be my fault, I-
Okay.
But I'm sorry.
Well, this, this, this is not an emergency, right? Nobody's life's in peril, nobody's house is on fire, this is just, we're trying to be nice to our fellow gentlemen, volunteer gentlemen, that, that wear a badge and assist. I got it, they're great guys, they show up, they do a great job. I've dealt with them for years, both in and out of the courtroom, and I, I think they're a great bunch, but you still have to follow the rules.
I did follow the rules, I did it for the June, sir.
No, no, you didn't, it's here before us, and it hadn't been the finance committee yet, that's what I told the chief, put it on the June agenda, we'll put it on the June agenda, no problem. And then, to make sure that you followed all the rules that are here. I don't know if any departments had an opportunity to, they may not want them, I don't know, I don't know, but were they given the opportunity to say, that would be a real handy vehicle to do whatever?
Yes, sir, I actually, last week, we were transferring a, another unit to municipal court.
Okay.
And that's a different vehicle.
Okay, but were these two units on that list?
I did put them on the June, sir.
So you shared it with municipal court, did you sell it, did you share it with Park and Recreation?
I have given them, they, they wanted pickups, sir.
You're telling me that they had the opportunity and nobody stood up, is that your testimony?
They're wanting pickup trucks, these are Tahos.
I understand what they are, I can, but I don't know what anybody's desire is out there or possible use, you know, I mean, sedans is one thing, Tahos, pickups, I mean, all the departments in the city are always looking for more pickups, and rightfully so, we use the heck out of our stuff around here. So, bottom line, Mr. Mayor, it's not an emergency, we, by doing this at this time, and I'm not against Mounted Patrol, I want to help those guys all I can, this is about following the rules and the procedures, from top to bottom. If you don't like the rules, bring it to somebody's attention that has the power to circum, to change the rules, but if you follow proper procedure, we'll get there and everybody will know what's going on. I was absolutely shocked when I saw this on my agenda, because I knew it was supposed to be on the June finance committee, I'd already told staff that.
Counselor McCorn, I, I owe you an apology for that, I didn't realize the vehicles had any depreciable amount of money left. I, I have seen some of the vehicles that the Mounted Patrol uses, they do a great deal of volunteers work, as you know, especially during the fair and things like that, working hour after hour down there, working traffic, and, you know, and they do a good job, and it's probably, this was my fault, I should have known it had a depreciable value, and, but I, it was my understanding, we had gotten some new units, and these were pretty much surplus, and, and so that, it was my fault, I, I don't, hope you don't go after the chief. I, I probably pushed this up earlier because I thought they were depreciated and were not in, in needed by our department, and I, I value, I, as you do, value the service of the New Mexico Mounted Patrol, so it's probably my fault, I will take heed, and I will do my best to make sure that they don't, that doesn't happen again about not going before the committee in the, in the proper chain, so I apologize to you for that.
Well, if we don't have rules and procedure and not followed, then we have chaos. That's the reason why we have all those laws and rules and procedures, and you got the law, and then you fine tune it a little bit with some of the rules to fit your particular purpose, that's what that's supposed to hap, that, that's the way that's supposed to happen. And we're jumping the gun here, Mayor, and, and I didn't, I don't kick about you having the authority to put stuff immediately on the agenda, because things happen that need immediate attention, this is not one of them. This is not one that couldn't wait for another thirty days, in my opinion. Now, Mounted Patrol guys, sorry, but you got a no vote from me because the procedures weren't followed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, any further discussion? Clerk will call a roll. For a due pass, I guess this would be a due pass motion to transfer these two vehicles, unit thirty dash two seventy-three and fifty-seven dash one thirty-three, or two thousand and fifteen, a two thousand and fourteen Chevy Tahoe. Clerk will call the roll, please.
Mr. Mayor, can I please get who the second made them-
The second was Council Lady Moore?
Thank you. Counselor Corn?
No.
Counselor Maruho?
No.
Counselor Chapel?
Yes.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Halverson?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson? Counselor Heldenbrand?
Aye.
Counselor Oropesa?
No.
Counselor Cabin?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to three.
And again, thank you all very much, and I hope you use them well, and Counselor McCorn, I'm sorry for my faux pas. Okay, next, we have item fourteen, to advertise for the, for RFP number twenty-four dash zero one-two engineering scope of work for the Roswell Industrial Air Center, again, in accordance with the FAA circular one fifty slash fifty-one hundred slash fourteen E, architectural engineering and planning consultants, Councilman Hildebrand.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I move that we approve to advertise for RFP twenty-four dash zero one-two for engineering services, scope of work for the Roswell Air Center in accordance with the Federal Aviation Advisory Circular one fifty slash fifty-one hundred dash fourteen E.
We have a motion by Councilman Hildebrand, a second by-
Second.
Second by Counselor Orpessa. Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight to ask for approval to advertise the scope of work for RFP twenty-four zero twelve, engineering services for the Roswell Air Center, in accordance with Federal Aviation Advisory Circular one fifty slash fifty-one hundred fourteen E, which is architectural engineering and planning consultants. Our current PSA in place, their contract will expire October fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, and have exhausted all extensions. Legal committee heard this for the first time on April twenty-fifth and voted four to zero to send it to council.
Okay, Counselor Chapel?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I need to abstain from voting on this due to employment.
Okay, Counselor Chapel has asked to be abstained, to abstain from this because of his employment. If there's no objection, I think that request should be granted. Is there any objection to that? Okay, seeing none, okay, now, do we have any questions, Jennifer, on the approval to advertise for an RFP for engineering service for the scope of work at the Roswell Industrial Air Center? Any, any questions? Seeing none, if the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Corn?
Yes.
Counselor Maruho?
Yes.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Halverson?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson? Counselor Heldenbrand? Counselor Oropesa?
Yes.
Counselor Cabin?
Yes.
Thank you, by a vote of nine, and the affirmative, none in the negative, the approval to advertise RFP twenty-four dash zero one-two engineering services, scope of work for the Roswell Industrial Air Center, in accordance with the FAA regulations, has been approved. Next, we go to item fifteen. Item fifteen is approval of the Roswell Chavas, Roswell Chavas County Economic Development Corporation funding request in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. The, it would take a majority of the quorum here to, to do that, so if we can count, do we have a motion, Counselor Hildebrand? Oh, excuse me- Oh, excuse me, Counselor Corn.
I know you're mad at me, Mayor, but...
Probably mad at you.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong line.
You need new glasses?
No, I'm just on the wrong line.
Oh, okay, all right. So, Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the Roswell Economic Development Corporation Funding Request for $2,000. They also... We amended...
Two thousand? Kid, man, you're on the wrong line, Counselor.
Hey, I'm trying to save money. For 200,000. I'm proud of those guys. I get two million dollars, but I had it.
Motion by Counselman Corn, as amended, seconded by Counselor Cabin, as amended. Oh, okay, well, we fixed it. Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today, we come to you with Item 15 for approval of the Roswell-Chavas County Economic Development Corporation Funding Request in the amount of $200,000. The RCC EDC works in partnership with the City of Roswell to provide services to businesses and expand businesses and economic development in our area. On April 25th, Legal Committee approved this item four to zero to be reviewed at Finance Committee with the proposed contract amendment to Exhibit B, Metrics E3, changing 10 to 20 and the word weekly to monthly. It has already been updated in your packet. On May 5th, 2024, Finance Committee recommended approval five to zero with the same amendment to the contract. The contemplated agreement would provide a revised and updated scope of work to support the RCC EDC's work and continue the city's existing relation with RCC EDC. In 2020, the contract amount was 120,000. Fiscal year '21, the contract amount was 96,000. And in fiscal year '22, the contract amount was 200,000. And this current contract... Fiscal year '24, the contract was 150,000. The RCC EDC is currently requesting an increase of $50,000 for fiscal year '25 for a total of $200,000. I have Mr. Bullock and Mr. Esperitu here if you guys have any questions.
Thank you. Counselman Chapel.
Mr. Mayor, Counselors, I need to abstain from this vote due to my wife's employment.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor... All those in favor of giving Counselman Chapel an "A" boy?
Aye.
Thinking about saying "aye." Okay. You guys, sometimes I might tell you... Well, anyway. Yes, Counselman... Or, excuse me, Mr. Bullock.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jennings. On behalf of the EDC Board, I represent the EDC Board as the chairman this year. And I want to thank you for your ongoing support and your help of our organization, your partnership. I had a whole bunch of things I could say, but, boy, you all said it really well at the end of Mike's presentation. So, I want to echo my appreciation for the support that you've given us. And that this is a community endeavor. There's no "I" or "me" involved. I've been saying that I believe it is our duty to be accountable to those who have supported us. And for the EDC, we're here to help build, grow, and expand business in Roswell and Chavas County. That's our mission. To that end, our accountability to our supporters, the city, to the county, and to our thriving membership. And I hope what you've seen in our annual report is that we've been hard at work. I'm very proud of the staff led by Mr. Esperitu. And it's an honor to get to work with them and see them on behalf of the board, day in and day out. You know, one thing I'll mention, Mike talked about J-TIP, the 190-plus jobs that were created for local businesses. There's an economic impact to that. When those people go home and they have a good job that's paying rent, that's paying a mortgage, that's putting backpacks on their kids' backs, paying for meals, it's taking care of life and making a wonderful life, that does have an economic impact as those dollars get circulated. And through that one program alone, we can estimate a $49 million economic impact from just that one program. And practically, that comes down to Mr. Esperitu and his team working day in and day out, contacting and being in touch with investors, developers, our local business leaders and owners. And what an honor it is to see excellent work happening here in Roswell. And we pledge to continue that work going forward in this next year. Your support for our organization continues that work. We've got a lot to do. We've got a lot of investors and developers who are looking at Roswell right now as a result of the hard work of many years of foundation laden partnership that we've had with our community. And it's a very exciting time, but we have a lot of work to do. And so, I want to thank you for, again, for your support. And I'll share with you one last thing, so I don't get accused of being too windy. You know, I was having dinner with a friend of mine, both of us born and raised in Roswell. And I hate to admit publicly, but at one point, we couldn't wait to get out of here. We couldn't wait to leave Roswell. There was nothing here. We didn't want to be a part of it. We wanted nothing to do with it. And then, you know, we found our way back. It's a magnetic pull that Roswell has. And we were sitting there reflecting that, you know, we don't feel bad about that. In fact, for the first time in our lives, we're really proud of our community. We're proud of the place that we're developing. We're proud of the work that we're doing. And we're proud to raise our families here. And my involvement with the EDC for the past seven, going on eight years, is because I want to do my part to help my community, because I want my kids to have a wonderful place that they feel proud to live in and to grow up in and call home. I hope that we continue to do that. And the way that we're going to continue to do that isn't by just chasing dollars, it's by working together. And this is a community effort. We want to continue to partner with you and with all of those who have supported us to see great things happen in our community. And I really believe we're at the tipping point of really great things happening in our community. So, with that, I'll stand for your questions. And I want to, again, on behalf of the Board of the EDC, thank you for your support and your consideration of this request.
Thank you. We have questions from Counselmen. Seeing... Oh, Council Lady Arnold.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I want to make sure I'm understanding a couple of things. If any member of the Finance can help me out with this. I think in fiscal year '24, did we cut... Did we cut the EDC back? Yes, okay. We cut them in '23, and then we raised them in '24.
They were cut back in fiscal year ending June 24.
Okay. So, did we cut the Hispano Chamber as well?
Everyone was cut.
Okay, so...
They were all cut.
Yes.
Same percentage.
Okay. Like a 10% or just was it all the same amount? Well, no, because the Main Street Roswell only gets 40,000, correct? Okay. And are we planning on increasing theirs as well?
Counselor, can I answer that for you?
Yes.
These are one of those two groups that made presentations.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying, do we have... I just keep hearing that we're broke. So, I'm asking...
I can't speak for the rest of the members because of the legal committee. But right now, they've got no request in.
Sure.
So, how can we allocate dollars for them when they have no request in?
Well, I just didn't know if that was the intention to put it back in. I didn't know... Because, you know, I'm just wondering ahead of time if we actually have any intentions of going across the board. Like I said, we're broke. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, clerk call a roll. There are voice vote. We can have a voice vote on that? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, by a vote of eight in the affirmative, one in the negative, and one abstention, the item... Item... No, this is not 15. Is this 15? Yeah. Item 15 for the approval of the funding request in the amount of $200,000 for the economic... Roswell-Chavas County Economic Development Corporation has been approved.
Thank you, Counselors.
Okay, thank you all very much. Next, we have Item 16. And this is for Resolution 24-20, adoption of the 24-20, approving the 23rd Audit and Corrective Action Plan. And so, Counselman Corn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move we adopt the Resolution 2420, adopting the 23rd Audit and Corrective Action Plan.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselman Corn, a second by Counselor Johnson. Okay. Ms. Davies?
Mayor, City Council. I'm here to talk about the audit and the corrective plan of action that you all received. Everyone in Finance received the hard copy of the audit in the Finance Committee. Everyone else got theirs today. On the packet was also the corrective plan of action. You'll... You received the bound copy. Patella, Brown, and Hill, Chris Gardner is here. He's going to do a presentation with the PowerPoint and tell you about the audit and the seven audit findings we have. We are asking for a resolution because the State of New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration requires City Council to approve by resolution showing acceptance and approval of the audit. DFA also requires a corrective action plan on the findings presented in the audit. There are seven audit findings. Those findings are on Page 113 through 119 in your audit. And if any of you, as you go through the audit, if you have any questions, you can contact me. Chris, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You all should have, I think, a hard copy of the presentation. This is highlights from the exit conference, I think we did back in December, early December this year. The audit had to go through the state auditor's process of reviewing and getting approved. It is now a public document on the state auditor's website. And I have just some highlights that we went over in that exit conference, like I said, back in December. If you look at the first slide talking about our opinion, we issued what we call an unmodified opinion. As I put in this presentation, that's a clean opinion. Exactly the type of report that the city wants to receive. It's the highest level of assurance that auditors can give. And so, our report states that your financial statements are what we call materially correct. And what that means is, is there could be errors in the numbers, but those errors are not going to be big enough to affect the opinion of the readers of the financial statement. So, if you were to give your audit to a banker, those errors are not going to be big enough to change the banker's opinion on the financial status of the city. If you go to the next slide, there's two additional reports that are reports from us. The one on the left is what we call a Yellow Book Report. In New Mexico, the state auditor requires all audits to follow the Yellow Book standards. It's a government auditing standards. And the reason is, is they want us to test internal controls. And then also, the state audit rule probably expands that for about 20 to 25 potential items that they want us to test. Things like procurement, travel, and per diem. So, there's additional samples that the state auditor wants us to test. In that report on the left, we don't give an opinion on internal controls because we do not pick sample sizes big enough to do that. What we do is we go through in that report, spell out how we're testing internal controls above what regular auditing standards require. And then we talk about the results. And as you can see, we do have seven findings, and we'll talk about that at the very end. The report on the right is what we call a single audit. It's a compliance audit over your federal expenditures spent on federal grants. We do have to go through and we do an assessment. We determine based upon certain requirements. It's called a risk-based approach. Those grants that are bigger have to be looked at at least every three years. And so, we go through and we do that analysis. We test those grants that we pick. And we make sure that you're following what the federal government spells out for that particular grant. We do issue an opinion on that one. And as you can see here, it also is an unmodified opinion. So, both opinions that were issued are exactly the type of reports that the city wants to receive, and they're both good. We go to the next slide. The standards want us to talk about difficulties encountered in performing the audit. And the whole reason for that is they want the council to know how are your financial and your accounting records being maintained? Overall, we did not have any difficulties. We do have some findings that we'll talk about. But overall, when we asked for supporting documents, things like purchase orders, time cards, approved pay rates, all that information was given to us in a timely manner and given to us in good order. So, again, the reason for that is to let the council know that your financial records are being well maintained. We go to the next slide. Talks about adjustments. And I think this is really important for the council to talk about is because if we as auditors are having to come through and make lots of adjustments, then the council might need to be critical a little bit of the financials that you're given every month on a monthly basis or how often you're given those reports. The only adjustments that we have really are as a result of the state of New Mexico, how they require the city to report to DFA, also how they require the city to adopt a budget. The city is required to do both of those reportings on what we call cash basis accounting. Cash basis is not a generally accepted accounting principle. So, what has to happen is you maintain your records throughout the year on that basis of accounting. And then, your staff provides the journal entries to go from that basis to the methodologies that we are required. And we've got a couple of slides where we're going to go over a couple of different methodologies. So, in essence, your financial statements have three different bases of accounting. Your cash basis were your budgetary reports, and then you have modified accrual and full accrual. Again, these... And I think the big takeaway is, is we did not have a single adjustment that related to the cash basis accounting and how you maintain your records and how you report to DFA and monitor the budget throughout the year. So, what that tells you as a council is that your infrastructure that you've established by the city is properly reporting the cash basis accounting and how the reports are to be given to the council. If we go to the next slide, we're going to talk about those seven findings. So, the first one is the zoo inventory. So, during our testing, it came to our attention that there were certain animals that were given away without the proper approval. And so, the director went ahead on their own and made some decisions to get rid of some of the animals, but it should have gone through an approval process. So, our suggestion is, is making sure that we have written policies and procedures to ensure that this takes place in the future. The next one is controls relating to payroll. During our testing, it came to our attention that there were some police department employees that were falsifying timesheets. And so, we just need to make sure that, again, controls are established to ensure that the proper approvals are going over those and that they're being scrutinized and so that we are paying for valid work hours and not paying for false hours in the future. The next one is police evidence. Police Department has a bunch of evidence over in their locked vaults. We actually went over and looked at it. And on the city records, there's 114,000 that has been recorded in your general ledger. However, there was really no detail showing what does that 114,000 entail. So, the city needs to go through, complete an inventory listing, and reconcile that to your general ledger so that we have a listing of all the items and make sure that those two reconcile. And that process wasn't happening in the past. The next one is controls over procurement. During our testing of procurement, it came to our attention that there was a payment made for an alcohol and food vendor for the UFO Festival that they were paid about approximately $35,000 without going through a formal procurement process in accordance with city policy. So, that payment was made without going through the proper approval. The next one is, again, not following proper approval for procurement. There was procurement that was paid out for rail line repairs. Again, there was no formal process that went through and approved that in accordance with, actually, this one's state law. And so, we violated state law by not going through procurement and making that payment. Pledge collateral. This is kind of an unfair finding, but state audit rule is very... Pledge collateral. This is kind of an unfair finding, but state audit rule is very clear that we as auditors have to disclose this. Your financial institutions are required to give so much collateral. For the most part, the city is, or your financial institutions are required to collateralize at least fifty percent of the amounts in your accounts that are above FDIC insurance. They, one of the financial institutions did not fully collateralize it by three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. So, again, that's really the bank's responsibility, but the state audit rule is very clear that we have to include it as a finding when that happens. And so, there is a process that takes place, that reviews that. And that was, I think, cleared fairly quick after year end. But again, at June thirtieth, you were not collateralized in accordance with state law. The next finding is filing of tax returns. There were some IRS late penalties, and then also the ERISA Administration Services, where there were some late penalties being paid, because those reports were not submitted to those agencies within the due dates on those required by the federal government. And so, therefore, you were subject to some fines. One of the things I want to point out, and the reason the state auditor actually requires us to number our findings the way we do, is to give the council how long these findings have been in existence. And as you notice, on the findings that I have listed here, six of the seven were brand new. And there's one finding, that last one that we talked about, payroll, that has been a repeat. But for the majority of the findings, they were resolved and dealt with last year. And these findings that we're coming up with are all new issues, and were not repeats from the prior year. We go to the next find, or next slide. You'll see six findings that were resolved. As auditors, we are required to go through and make sure that management has either adopted policies or taken care of these findings from the prior year, and ensure that the items have been dealt with. Based upon our testing, six of the seven, and these six right here listed, were resolved, and they were removed from the audit as a finding during the current year. What I like to tell council is, what you want to see is, you're going to have issues that come up. There's a lot of transactions that flow through the city finances. What you want to see as a council, how is management dealing with the findings? When it's brought to the attention of management, are they resolving them? And as you can see here, six out of seven were resolved, which is very good. So, they are being taken serious, they are being dealt and resolved with, and that's what you want to see as a council. The next slide talks about what we call government-wide financial statements. What these particulars, these first few slides, I'm going to give some graphs. What they go over is what we call full accrual accounting. And as you can see, what happens is, is all of your long-term assets and long-term liabilities are actually recorded on the balance sheet. That's not typical fund accounting. What happens also is, you can see all the funds listed below, they get scrunched into one column. So, all your governmental activities are put together, all your enterprise activities are put together, and it's reported on this full accrual accounting. Again, when you adopt a budget, you buy a building for ten million dollars, you put it as an expense in a budgetary basis. On the modified accrual, it's also expense. In this set of accounting, it gets capitalized as an asset. So, these first few graphs are on that full accrual accounting methodology. We look at the first slide. At the end of twenty, or June thirtieth of twenty-three, you had a hundred and sixty million dollars in your governmental activities of assets. You had a hundred and thirty-three million of liabilities, leaving you what we call net position. In essence, that's the equity of all the governmental funds on this methodology of accounting of twenty-seven million. So, it's an increase, as you can see here, of about seven million dollars from the prior year. The next slide is talking about your business-type activities. And in your business-type activities, you ended up the year with a hundred and sixty-five million in assets, fifty-five million in liabilities, and then a net position of a hundred and ten million dollars. Again, it's an increase of about fourteen million from the prior year. All these are full accrual accounting. And to be honest with you, it only encompasses about four pages out of the audit, and the only time you see these number is audit time, because of the standards that we have to follow. So, it's really not a significant portion of your day-to-day operations on this type of reporting. If we go to the next slide, we have what we call fund, or modified accrual accounting. In modified accrual accounting, you have a separate column for each of your funds. So, your governmental activities have, general fund has its own column, every single one. The city has twenty-six special revenue funds. Of course, you have your general fund. You have three debt service funds and two capital project funds. So, in those financial statements, we have a little over thirty funds that are included in those financial statements. With those financial statements, they are in what we call the modified accruals I mentioned a moment ago. What that is, is it's close to the budgetary cash basis, but it varies. Assets, property taxes, GRT, that's going to be collected within sixty days, is shown as an asset. Property taxes that are more than sixty days are not shown as assets. They're basically taken away off of those statements. So, it is a little bit different. When you buy a building, it's expensed. It's not shown as an asset on these particular sets of financial statements. Again, it's closer to how you create your budget, but it does have a little bit of variances. We go to the first slide. All these slides that I have are really talking about your general fund, because that is really the operational fund of the city. So, at the end of twenty-three, you ended up with twenty-nine million dollars in assets, four million dollars of liabilities, and then twenty-five million of fund balances, what we call it here, which in essence is, again, your equity. It's your assets less your liabilities. We'll go into some specifics on the next slide. You ended up with your general fund, again, having twenty-nine million in assets. The biggest component of that is cash and investments. That was twenty-two point seven million. You had accounts receivable of six point two million. And then you had other items that were about a hundred thousand dollars. Your assets, as we showed on that slide before, increased about six and a half million, of which cash increased about five million during fiscal year twenty-three. Receivables increased about one point two million dollars. And so, those were the biggest changes from one year to the next. We go to the next slide. Talks about liabilities. Your liabilities were three point six million in the general fund. The biggest item there is what we call deferred leases, and that was a new standard that had to be implemented. You have about a hundred thousand in accounts payable, a hundred thousand in accrued payroll. You have deferred property tax of three hundred thousand. Those are property taxes that won't, that were not collected within sixty days, but were still owed. Those show up as a liability on these particular financial statements. And then there was two hundred thousand dollars of other liabilities. The liabilities stayed fairly consistent. They went up about three hundred thousand dollars. Again, that new standard that had to be implemented had an effect of a one point one million dollar increase. However, your accrued payroll decreased quite a bit. It was, I'm sorry, the leases was one point five million. Your payroll decreased by one point one million. And the reason was, in FY twenty-two, there was a full payroll that had to be accrued. FY twenty-three, there was only one payroll. I think it was actually June thirtieth, wasn't paid until July. Whereas, in the prior year, a whole payroll was worked before June thirtieth, but it wasn't paid until after June thirtieth. So, that's the whole reason for the increase in that liability. The next slide is revenues. As you can see, the biggest component is taxes. And it looks like there's a big decrease in taxes, but as you can see here, eleven point eight million relates to GRT. Well, overall, the city's GRT increased over the prior year. However, the budgetary committee, budget committee, decided to move GRT funds instead of transferring it, putting it in the general fund, then moving it out, that just to put it directly in those other funds where the funds were to be spent. So, it's really just a change in methodology. It wasn't like there was a decrease in your taxes overall. Like I said, they did increase if you were to take all the funds and put them together. This is just taking a picture of the operational fund and the general fund. When you look at expenses, your expenses remained fairly consistent. Expenses overall increased about a million dollars, and the majority of that related to just general governmental expenditures. We did not have any budget violations, and so, all the amounts that the council approved from a budgetary basis were within budget. And so, even though the expenses went up a little bit, you had planned on that based upon your budgetary process that you went through. With that, I'll open up to any questions.
We have questions. Any councilman have questions? Oh, Councilman Corn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just got a quick question. On these audit findings, the seven, if I remember correctly, without going through a bunch of paperwork up here, those are primarily because people didn't follow the rules. Would that be a fair statement?
That is a fair statement.
Thank you.
Yes, Council, Councilman Arnold, you were on there. Have you, oh, same thing, okay. Councilman Johnson.
Yes, sir. On your samples, how big was your sample size on your findings?
Which particular findings? Because to be honest with you, they're all different.
Yeah, I mean, would you say it was like a three percent sample size?
Not knowing how many transactions there are, so statistically, we are required, when it comes to just testing internal controls, we pick samples of about twenty-five transactions for the most part. When it comes to testing federal expenditures, we have to place more reliance. And statistically, we have to test samples of at least forty for those. And there's, like, for example, the single audit, there's multiple different samples that we pull. Allowable cost is one. You know, there could be potentially eligibility and different things. So, there are different sample sizes for the different ones. But overall, generally, we picked sample sizes of twenty-five for like payroll, cash disbursements, cash receipts. And but when it came to internal controls relating to your single audit expenditures, they were approximately forty.
Perfect. Thank you. I know, reading the report, it was a little confusing. You did an excellent job of explaining it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment or questions? Okay, seeing, well, thank you very much. We know we've had a few issues. We did our best to correct the ones we had from last year, and what we'll, we'll work on these as well.
Yes.
So.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Pardon? Okay, thank you. So, we have, we have, we need a Resolution twenty dash, twenty-four dash twenty is adoption of this, approving the federal audit and the two thousand and twenty-three-year audit and corrective action plan was made by Councilman Corn, seconded by Councilman Johnson. If, it takes six members of the governing body to approve this. So, if the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Corn.
Yes.
Counselor Marujo.
Yes.
Counselor Chapel.
Yes.
Counselor Arnold. Counselor Halverson.
Yes.
Counselor Moore.
Yes.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Counselor Hildebrand. Counselor Oropesa.
Yes.
Counselor Cabin.
By vote, ten in the affirmative, none in the negative. Item sixteen approves the fiscal year twenty-three audit and corrective action plan. Next, we go to item seventeen, Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-three, adoption of a Resolution twenty-four three, dash twenty-three, amending the Resolution twenty-four dash zero-two pursuant to the New Mexico Open Meetings Act. Counselor Hildebrand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we adopt the Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-three, amending Resolution twenty-four dash zero-two pursuant to the New Mexico Open Meetings Act.
We have a motion, my counsel.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Lady Halverson. Okay, so, let's see. Does anyone care to speak on the Open Meetings Act?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
This is just a housekeeping item. We did update the, or the resolution. We removed general services from there, and then we moved infrastructure from the fourth Monday to the third Monday at two o'clock. And then, public safety was at four-thirty, and now they're having their meetings at four o'clock. And I stand for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions on Resolutions twenty-four dash twenty-three? Seeing none, if clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Corn.
Yes.
Counselor Marujo.
Yes.
Counselor Chapel.
Yes.
Counselor Arnold. Counselor Halverson.
Yes.
Counselor Moore.
No.
Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Counselor Hildebrand. Counselor Oropesa.
Yes.
Counselor Cabin.
Yes.
By vote, nine in the affirmative, one in the negative. Item seventeen, Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-three, amending Resolution twenty-four dash zero-two, the Open Meetings Act is duly passed. Okay, or has been adopted. Next, we have ordinance twenty-four dash zero-eight, authorized to advertise for public hearing. Proposed ordinance twenty-four dash zero-eight, amending Chapter Two relating to elected officer salaries. Counselman Corn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, I move that we adopt or authorize advertisement for public hearing, ordinance twenty-four oh-two, amending Chapter Two related to elected officer salaries.
Second.
We have a motion by Corn, seconded by Counselor Marujo.
You'll get it right one of these days.
Okay, counsel, okay, we have a motion. Are there any questions on, let's see, we have, who do we have? Yes, sir. Did you care to explain that?
I would be happy to explain it. This is ordinance twenty-four oh-eight. It's authorized to advertise for a public hearing. This is amending our Chapter Two, which governs the city's administration. And it is going to be principally dealing with the mayor and the mayor pro tem and the councilor's salaries, as well as it's going to address some, and codify some items related to public officials who may be in arrears to the city and provide for a mechanism for the city to recoup that, those rearages.
Okay. Are there any questions from any, any of the council members on ordinance twenty-four dash zero-eight? Counselman Chapel, please.
Yes, just to confirm, this does not increase our salaries at all, just for the record.
Counselor, can you speak into your mic, please?
My apologies. Just to, just be, it is on. Just to be clear, this does not increase our salaries at all, correct?
Uh, no, it does not.
Okay, just wanted it on the record.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments? Okay, seeing none, if clerk will call the roll. For the approval of ordinance twenty-four eight, authorizes a public hearing for the approval of, public hearing for ordinance twenty-four dash zero-eight relating elected officer salaries. Okay, clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Corn.
Yes.
Counselor Marujo.
Yes.
Counselor Chapel.
Yes.
Counselor Arnold. Counselor Halverson.
Yes.
Counselor Moore. Counselor Johnson.
Yes.
Counselor Hildebrand. Counselor Oropesa.
Yes.
Counselor Cabin.
Yes.
By vote, ten in the affirmative, none in the negative. Ordinance twenty-four dash zero-eight, we will advertise a public hearing for that ordinance, amending a Chapter Two related to elected officer salaries. Okay, next, do we have any reports from our city manager?
Yes, sir. Mayor Jennings, council members. In just a minute, we're going to have a quick video presentation of the new pickleball courts at your Roswell Adult Center. Again, just something we're really proud of as a community, working together as a community. This was really exciting project that Larry McCrery at the Adult Center and Carolyn Mitchell, both with the Roswell Adult Center Foundation approached the city and said approached the city and said, hey, uh, we've got a half million dollars, and we'd like to bill, build pickleball courts at the Adult Center that everybody could use year-round, covered, uh, with lighting. And, uh, we'd like to contract or, or lease, uh, the land site in order to hire our general contractor to build these courts and stay out of Davis Bacon, uh, type wages. And, uh, just a really good collaboration between the Adult Center Foundation and the city, uh, and would love to see more of those types of collaborative efforts. I will tell you that the pickleball, pickleball courts look outstanding. I've been on the surface, met Larry out there and played a, a round of pickleball myself, and they're great. Uh, the last remaining piece, uh, is the ADA sidewalks. So, they are not open to the public yet, but they are coming soon. Uh, with that, I'll, I'll let the video run.
Everybody can look.
Maybe.
Pickleball courts.
And so, Larry took this project from start to finish. And, uh, if any of you know Larry, uh, he's a stickler for the details. And so, he nursed this thing along, uh, from start to finish, uh, at every stage, and made sure it was done absolutely right. Uh, spent a lot of time on this project. I don't know if the, the video's gonna run. We may be having some problems there, and that's okay. Uh, the main thing is, you can see them over there on the corner of Eighth, uh, Street, right there, uh, at the Adult Center. They look fantastic. The colors, you may recognize from our, our two high schools here in town. Uh, we're well represented over at, uh, the Roswell Adult Center. Just really appreciate them. Um, I'll touch on a couple of things, uh, other things real briefly here. Uh, wanted to thank all of our volunteer fire department and of course, uh, the Roswell Fire Department, uh, with regard to their efforts out at the Air Center, uh, May 25th, or April 25th, um, the fire out there. Got to see it with my own eyes. That's the first time I've ever been to something like that. I can just tell you, your, your team, uh, was out there, uh, whether it was the, the Air Center Director, her assistant, uh, the Deputy City Manager, the Chief of Police, the Chief of Fire, uh, and Dan Fuller was out there directing those guys right in the middle of all of it. And, uh, uh, if I had to guess, I'd say there were 75 volunteer firefighter trucks out there. Pretty amazing, uh, effort by those guys, and no one was hurt. Uh, so, just really outstanding effort, uh, with them. You may have noticed when you came in tonight, uh, we've got, uh, a flyer or a, uh, card, uh, for the All-Inclusive Park ribbon cutting ceremony. That'll be May 20th at 10:00 a.m. at the All-Inclusive Park. Um, a lot of efforts, uh, have been put together and, uh, to, uh, construct this park and continue to build out and improve the park going forward. And, uh, a lot of credit goes to Jim Burris and his team on that. And of course, our mayor, our governor, um, our local representatives, Greg Nybert, et cetera. And, and finally, just a big thank you to our city maintenance group. Uh, you may have heard, uh, over the weekend, and it always happens on a weekend, late at night when nobody's there, uh, we had a water leak in the ceiling at the police department, uh, sometime early, late hours, uh, Saturday evening or early morning hours Sunday. Um, Nathaniel Mascaris and his crew were out there at 6:00 a.m., uh, got right on it, got it dried out quickly. Uh, those floors are gonna need to be replaced, uh, but kudos to our maintenance group. They jumped right in the middle of it, and they've been honored ever since. So, uh, big thanks to them.
Counsel. Counsel Lady Halverson.
So, um, as I understand it, the pickleball courts can open before the ADA is completed as long as they have the plan. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have a timeline on that?
Say again, say again.
Do you have a timeline on that? Whether the plan's gonna be done?
No. So, we've got pickleball materials, we've got pickleball paddles, we've got pickleball nets, uh, the lights work great, everything works great. We've just gotta put in our ADA compliant sidewalk and a fencing area. Of course, we would encourage everyone to go through the Adult Center, uh, to, uh, access the pickleball, uh, court area, um, and use those materials that are there, um, through the Adult Center. Uh, and that is in the works. And, uh, in talking to Jim, uh, they are, they are moving it forward quickly.
It's just once the plan's done, then they can start playing on.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Will they be available on the weekends and all the time?
To start, uh, that's, that's not a part of our plan at this point, um, to start out with. Um, we're a little concerned about them getting damaged, and we'd like to control that through the Adult Center itself, uh, and have members use, uh, those facilities.
Okay, that's good. I, I know on some of the other ones, you have a number of children playing soccer and through those nets and things and ruin them over in Kahoon Park. I've noticed that quite a bit.
Yes, sir.
Soccer and other sport where you can kick a ball into the net, that's...
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, thank you. Do we, you have?
Thank you, sir.
Oh, excuse me.
We might wanna mention that we had the big trash cleanup at Cielo.
Your mic, please.
Yes, sir. So, uh, Councilman Hildebrand was referring to the big trash cleanup, uh, this weekend at Cielo Grande. Um, would, again, thank our staff, uh, for all their efforts to get out there and get, uh, a lot of that cleaned up. But we've got volunteers, my understanding, uh, and it's keep America beautiful is, is, uh, being celebrated as well. And we're certainly doing that at Cielo Grande. I'm not, I don't have the number of volunteers, uh, off the top of my head. But I, I know we've got, we've had several. Kathy Lay and her group have been working with the volunteers, uh, for cleanup.
Yeah, I just wanna commend you and the city staff for cleaning up that whole Cielo Grande area over there. Uh, that thing had been neglected for years, uh, and there was a lot of accumulation of piles of trash, um, and then just trash that the citizens have left. But it is, it's looking great over there, and I commend you and the staff and all the departments that participated in that, so...
Thank you, sir. And I would, I would, uh, extend the same to you. Um, you, you certainly brought it up on my radar, uh, and I would thank Streets, uh, our Solid Waste Group, um, and our Parks Group. Uh, it was a team effort. Uh, as you know, there were several piles out there of trash and dirt and other things. We saw mattresses, tires, branches. Uh, we also saw some of that over behind Woolball, and they cleaned that up as well. Uh, and again, thank you for, for alerting it, uh, to make, putting it, uh, to our attention. And, uh, again, thank you to those crews for, for getting that cleaned up in short order. Yes, sir.
Counsel Lady Halverson wanted to respond.
Just real quick, um, I did talk to Kathy. They picked up, I don't know about the big piles of trash, but they picked up 1,900 pounds of trash. Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you. Counsel Lady Arnold.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, um, the first thing I wanna actually say, and I think this is a little too close to my face, but, um, is over the last couple of public safety meetings, um, our police department and fire department have reiterated to us on how, um, dire our retention, uh, circumstances are with our staff. And we are training individuals, and they are just immediately leaving. Um, so, uh, that's been at several public safety meetings. Uh, attending the job core, job fair today, um, that was again reiterated about how dire our situation is. Um, and I have no doubt in my mind that every member of this council is very aware of that, very concerned about it, and wants to, um, figure out what we can do as a community. Um, so, I wanted to ask of you, um, Mr. Cole, if you could actually, and maybe it's already been, been done, and I've not seen it, could you either provide me with the information of what it would take for us to become competitive? What do those numbers look like? What's projections on, on, um, because, you know, all we know is we don't have the money. But I need to know what kind of money we need. So, if you could run the numbers so we can actually understand what it would take for us to become competitive. Um, at this point, um, public safety is one of the main roles of government. And then, I'm going to actually be very mindful of the non-essential items in supporting those, even though I am always a fan of things that are happening in our community. Um, to me, our public safety is a serious priority. So, um, if you could have those to me late next week, I know you're going out of town or shortly thereafter, I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And just to make sure I'm, I'm clear, I, I think you're asking for Lee County salary numbers.
I guess, uh, in, yeah, in a nutshell, if that's, uh, if Eddie or, you could kinda show us what Eddie and Lee are, if those are our main competitors. And, uh, yeah, their numbers as far as what, yeah, but they're being paid is one thing. But what, what does that look like in a lump sum? You know, if, if it, if it's gonna cost us 2 million extra dollars a year, that's kinda what I'm talking about. What does that extra cost to us a year to actually compete with them in everything involved, as far as, you know, retirement, all of that? You know, what would be our increase by becoming competitive? Okay? And then, in any point, please call me. I'm happy to talk for...
Yeah, I, I think we could absolutely, uh, put, put some projections together through our finance department based on, uh, the salaries and the benefits. Um, I'll tell you, the city of Roswell is unique, uh, in that we pay about 88% of our health and medical, uh, benefits for our employees. Um, we're not gonna be able to compete with, uh, them on the money. Uh, we don't have oil and gas that they have. Uh, I know you don't wanna hear that, uh, no one wants to hear that. Um, but I could certainly put together some projected numbers of what we would have to do in order to meet the same, uh, salaries that they are putting together. That's as easy as going out online and looking at their salary schedules. Yes, ma'am?
Counsel, uh, Counselman Johnson.
Yes, I wanted to thank you, I, for getting the Peppermint Park up to par. You know, it was felt good, uh, running into a couple of, of kids that were, that was with their granddad and getting a personal thanks from them. And they were asking me when they can start fishing, and I said, well, pretty soon. I know, uh, it's getting ready to be stocked if it's not already. Um, that just means so much to the kids here in town. And, uh, I appreciate that. Thanks, uh, for all your hard work. It's all you guys, you as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's, that's Jim Burris, uh, Randy Perez, uh, out at the zoo, um, and certainly Rudy Chavis and his crew, uh, with the Parks Department. Those are the guys out there cleaning things up on Main Street every morning. But, uh, that, they do an outstanding job, and, and, uh, they've really taken pride in that facility again. And I think that's the piece we've been missing for a few years. Thank you.
Counsel Marujo.
Real quick, uh, we had an incident out at the base today at the university. And I just wanna thank the state police, the city police, and also Eastern New Mexico University, uh, Roswell Security Department. Uh, we had a suspect out there. Somehow, he made it into one of our buildings after the lockdown. And after they lifted the lockdown, he was exiting the building and was apprehended. And thank you, guys. Great job today.
Thank you. Uh, if I could, then, then we're about to wrap it up. Uh, Counselman Arnold, uh, one thing I think that we have to look at, and this, the council has taken some big steps, I think, already to get to where we can address the salaries. And that's when we have those enterprise funds. When we voted to go 10 to, 10 to 0, everybody voted in favor of adjusting the enterprise funds that we have. You have to remember, those enterprise, enterprise funds pay for all the blue collar workers that we have, and any other revenue that's left can go to police and fire and other, and other agencies. But all those enterprise funds, when, when we're short money in one of those enterprise funds, they are made up with monies that can be, that are used for other employees in the, in the, uh, in, in the city that are not in those blue collar workers at all. All those funds have to balance out. So, when we, when we made some changes in that, uh, by going with that, it will help us a great deal down getting us more competitive. You must always remember that in those other counties and stuff, their oil and gas revenues are extremely high compared in, in Eddie and Lee County are extremely high compared to us. And it's my understanding, like, for the example, is that the, in the fire department, there might be as high $7 an hour difference between an officer in, in Eddie County
Absolutely right. Uh, this council, uh, this governing body has, has taken, uh, uh, great, um, steps with political courage and will, uh, in recent months, uh, to try and put this city back on track. Uh, the way I see this from my perspective, um, is that's, that's part of my job is, is to get this budget back on track. And it has not been on track. And that is not, uh, uh, fabrication, uh, or exaggeration. Uh, we have not had a balanced budget where revenue matched expenditures for nine years in this city, since Larry Fry. That, that's how long. Uh, so, I'm trying to get us back to a path of sustainability where we're not dipping into the cash balance. And then, all of a sudden, we've gotta make some drastic cuts that would cripple this city.
I understand that. But like, right now, the fire department is down 15 drivers. They're, they're overextending the 15 that are there. They need 30 or so.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that Mr. Fuller? So, if we lose any more, we're in trouble. I mean, how many, when's it gonna be when we can't have firemen driving to the fires?
I completely agree. And working with fire, and I know working with the, the firemen's union, uh, one of the issues was you had to have, I believe, two years before you could ever, uh, apply and, and take the test for driver. Um, we've worked that down to one. Uh, that's helpful, but in the short term, it, it doesn't solve the, the, the problem.
So, if I may...
Well, you'll, you'll get there.
Okay.
Counsel Arnold.
Okay. Um, I think you got, this is no need to be defense. All I'm asking for is education and information. I've been right beside you guys on all of this. I just need to know where we're going. I have no vision, no information. I can't tell what they need, and I can't tell what we've got. So, that's why all I was asking for was information.
Uh, we'll, we'll get it for you.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments? Okay, seeing none, thank you all for being here. Good night. We're adjourned.